Welcome to Spokane City Council briefing session for June 26. Ms. Fister, if you could please call the roll.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Piccolo in a moment, but we actually would like to suspend the rules and add a reappointment to the Spokane Airport Board Ezra Eckhart. I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules to-
So moved to suspend the rules?
Second.
Any discussion for this purpose? Yep.
Can I add a purpose?
Yes.
For also adding a resolution to the agenda?
Yes. Well, let's, there might be several purposes here, so let's hang on, let's see. That's your Logan neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
You don't need to suspend the rules for that. And to add an ordinance on parking regulations. Is that fine? Somebody's, Councilmember Bingle, Zappone?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, and my short-term rental.
But that's just a substitution.
Yes.
So, so it is, motion to suspend the rules to add a board appointment, resolutions, and ordinances to the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, nay, any abstentions? All right, rules are suspended. Now is there a motion to add the reappointment of Ezra Eckhart to tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, no, any abstentions? All right, that is added, and now I'll turn it over to Mr. Piccolo for the consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Council.
Excuse me, did you want to add the other items? We've just added the appointment, you'll add them later?
Yeah, well, as we go through.
On the consent agenda, our first item will be briefed by City Clerk Terry Fister regarding the setting of a hearing for Initiative 2023 hyphen four.
Right, this is a request to set hearing before City Council for July 10, 2023 on proposed Initiative 2023 dash four petition signatures filed on behalf of Brian Hansen, petitioner regarding prohibiting encampments near schools, parks, playgrounds, and childcare facilities. On June 12, 2023, a representative of the petitioner of Initiative 2023 dash four filed with the city clerk's office petitions varying approximately 7,397 signatures. This constitutes 14.096% of the 52,475 votes cast at the last general municipal election held November 2, 2021. 5% or 2,624 signatures are required for placement on the next general municipal election ballot to be held November 7, 2023. Any questions?
And again, this would just be to set the hearing.
Correct.
And what's the, what's sort of the process on getting that done? I know last time that there's sort of in, not an unwritten rule, but just something that, a regular process, a historic process that's played out that-
I'll defer to Ms. Fister, but he's already complied with what he needs to do to get on the ballot, but we just have to have a hearing before it goes over.
They've collected the signatures, right? So this is just-
And they've been verified.
They have been verified, okay.
Yep.
These signatures have not been verified.
Oh, they haven't been verified?
And typically, council will ask that the signatures be sent for verification.
Okay, sir, I thought they were verified.
And that'll be one of the options during the July 10 hearing?
So I can, I can say from experience, if Vicki, our county auditor, is prepared, she could be looking at those as early as tomorrow if the council were to approve, prove this, and then once it goes through that, it would come back to us to basically send it to the ballot at that point. But even if we don't take action, it automatically goes to the ballot if it's confirmed that they received enough signatures.
It wouldn't be tomorrow, it would be July 11th, because July 10 would be the hearing on the unvalidated signatures.
I just mean they can get to validating them pretty quick.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right.
Item number two is a value blanket increase with Galls LLC, and Eric Olson will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council, Council President, thank you for letting me come up. We're looking to increase a police ballistic body wear or body armor value blanket, three reasons. They've increased in price. We have gone from a level 2A to a level 3A, which offers the officers more protection from different calibers of firearms, and this also includes the exterior carriers, they call them, that you see, and that most, a lot of officers are actually getting doctor's notes because they're healthier for you, you can actually take them off when you're not actually working, so when you're on a break, you can take those off. So we are just looking to add to the value blanket $65,000 that'll carry us actually just through the end of next month when the next one starts, but it pays for all the stuff we've had to buy outfitting our officers up to this point. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Number three is a five-year value blanket with Coleman Oil, and Adam Russell will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council. Fleet Services is seeking approval of a five-year, five-year value blanket with Coleman Oil for the purchase of R99 renewable diesel. Diesel vehicles make up about a third of our fleet, but they're responsible for 75% of the city's fuel consumption. Sourcing R99 will lower the carbon intensity of our diesel vehicles by 60 to 90%, dramatically advance the city toward our goal that 100% of our fleet be powered by electricity or other clean fuels by 2030, and reduce maintenance costs and downtime associated with repairs to emission systems. Fleet will purchase R99 using Washington State DAS contract 08721. All purchases of R99 will offset petroleum diesel purchases on a one-to-one basis, having a neutral effect on the budget with a yearly expenditure not to exceed $2,750,000. Can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Items four, five, and six will be addressed by Mike Sloan and those involved. Number four, revenue contract with Fat Beam LLC. Five, contract for amendment extension with Insight Global. And six, contract renewals for Mitchell Humphreys and Exella Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolo, good afternoon, Council President, City Council. Do we have to do anything special for this substitute of the contract? Or are we, because it was in your packet, the amendment we've made, Council President?
No, we do need to substitute formally.
Also move.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to clarify that the motion is to substitute the version that I circulated, not the one that is in the packet.
Correct.
Good clarification.
Should we say that into the mic since he didn't?
Yeah, this confirms that the motion is to substitute the version Mr. Bird substituted in the near past, not the one that's in the packet. All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, no, any abstentions? All right, it's substituted.
Thank you, Council President. So item four is a contract with Fat Beam LLC to permit Fat Beam the use of city interduct, and that's a portion of conduit that we have set up to lease for carriers wishing to do partnership with us, and it's an extensive contract. Fat Beam had me is, is extending their services within the city, both in their commercial side as well as RFP they've been recipient of with Spokane School District. So in that partnership, we'll be leasing on a five-year contract. We made modifications to the costs that we charge for interduct. That's one of the items we changed for bridge crossings because it's a very finite asset. And then secondly, the, based on review, is that we will annually review our rates for leasing of interduct and make it tied to market rates. That was a clarity that Council President and Councilmember Cathcart requested. We support it fully, it really clarifies our business of partnering, so we're asking the approval of this five-year contract.
I just wanted to thank you and all your crew for all the cooperation and participation, and also our consultant, Joe Parry. I think we've really gotten tighter, like you said, on where we're going, and this is also going to greatly serve the students of Spokane, so.
Yeah, thank Council President, yeah, the clarity was very much appreciated, so thank you again. Item five is a contract amendment extension with Insight Global LLC to provide a contract employee for network engineer support, extending term through December 31st. This is in part supporting our efforts to really get clarity on all of our conduit that we have and all the fiber in detail as we look to expand in our broadband initiative as well as our own services. We have a lot of information that's needed to be compiled, so it's at our fingertips. So if we have an issue with the fiber, or if we want to partner, we can better respond. This is the requirement to go out and pull manhole lids throughout the city, do a full inventory, verify down to the very finite level, of which we didn't in the past, and so now we're trying to play catch-up, and it aligns well with the broadband initiatives we're trying to do in this region, so we're requesting approval of this contract through the end of this year.
I have a question.
Yes.
So this contract employee doesn't take work away from any other employees?
No, it's, it's adding, this gentleman that we've hired is very skilled, he's actually taken a sabbatical from his professional, he's in telecommunications business. MBA engineering, he's also a certified PMP, so those resources are being utilized, of which we do not have that capacity in the work team. Thank you for asking. Good, great point. Okay, item six-
Sorry, real quick.
Oh, yes, sir.
I didn't, I don't know what that last acronym was, PMP, PNP?
Project Management Professional.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And then on this, for the $60,000, how long do we think it'll take him to complete that project?
We're hoping he'll have it done by December 31.
Okay.
Yeah, it, there is a lot of work, a lot of work. We, we were able to pick him up without, we picked him up in the short term as a, as a project employee, but as we started to expand our awareness of what we want to do as a region with broadband and the BAT team and the things that we're trying to do, that we've done historically of trying to serve that initiative, we realized there was more work that needed to be done for efficiency as we pursue that, that venture. Any other questions? Thank you. Item six, A, Mitchell Humphrey is our annual maintenance. These two items are our annual renewal of maintenance contracts for the support, first one, A, is for Mitchell Humphrey for annual maintenance and support of the city's financial management system. And again, I try to always make you aware this of any changes in regards to a cost increase. This one is actually a decrease from this current year's expense. There's a module within Mitchell Humphrey we're no longer utilizing, so we're able to remove it, and so we're renewing at a reduction. And item B is Exella for annual maintenance and support, the city's permitting, permitting licensing software, again, this is the annual maintenance, and this has a built-in 6.5 CPI increase contractually established, so it is an increase from this current year's cost, asking for approval for that contract as well. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven is a contract extension with JRB Integrated Solutions and Steve McDonald and Eric Finch.
Council President, council members, you know, this contract extension, this is for Joe Parry, who's been our kind of subject matter expert consultant, helping initially getting linked in with the IIJA grant process and the county's BroadLink initiative, and getting some of these planning documents that we've been going through with you previously. And this extension now is kind of really more inwardly focused in terms of really kind of trying to true up the assets we have and what we want to do with them and where we want to go, kind of developing that, that next stage business plan and strategy to bring back to you for, for consideration, and it's using the 75,000 that was already kind of previously approved as part of the 150 for Steve's group. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric. Number eight and nine will be briefed by Dan Bowler. They include the low bid for Cameron Riley LLC and a low bid for Shamrock Paving, Inc.
Good afternoon. Item eight is to propose a low big contract with Cameron Riley for Driscoll Alberta Cochran sidewalk project, which constructs sidewalk along those streets in the vicinity of Finch Elementary School. The low bid was 1.945 million, to which we proposed to add a 10% administrative reserve. One other bid was received, the low bid was about 198,000 or 11% above the engineer's estimate. Work is expected to start later this summer and most likely be completed by fall. And item nine is the proposed low big contract Shamrock Paving for the Strong Road Resurfacing Project. Low bid was 969,000, to which we proposed, had decided, a 10% administrative reserve. Four other bids were received, the low bid was about 118,000 or about 14% above the engineer's estimate. Once again, work is planned to start this summer and be completed by fall.
Dan, if you have it, I'm just curious, how much sidewalk do we get for $2 million? And if you don't have it in front of you, you can send it to me later, I'm really just curious.
I will send it.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
It's a fair amount.
Okay.
About six feet.
Six feet?
Thank you, Dan. Number 10 is a contract renewal with ESO Solutions, and I see Brian Schaefer's listed here, but he is, we have a guest presenter.
Council President, council members, Chief Schaefer had a, had another appointment that was double booked. This is a contract for ESO Solutions, our annual maintenance and support for Incident Record and Management System. The system software replaced the updated and the old versions of both fire reporting and EMS, electronic patient record system. These systems, of course, are vital for reporting incidents to fire crews and maintaining our, our record database, and it also reports to NIFERS, our National Fire Incident Reporting System, automatically. This contract is just an annual renewal for July 21, 23 through July 20, 2024, to an annual cost of $88,446.2. This is the sixth renewal, been in contract since 2017. Questions? Thanks.
Number 11 is the acceptance of additional funding for the Domestic Violence Intervention and Therapeutic Program, and Sarah Thompson. Is there anyone here to brief this item? We will follow up with council, has this been briefed to committee already?
I believe so.
I think it has.
It has too.
Passed through grant funding.
And this is just money from administrative office of the courts. I did correspond with Mr. Delaney today about another contract they wish was on this agenda, but we're going to get on Thursday, but this is just, is grant money from the state.
Okay, thank you. Number 12 is an amendment and restated in a local agreement with Spokane County for the Northeast PDA, and Amanda Beck will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council, we briefed you at Urban Experience. This would be an expansion of the existing NE PDA to encompass more of those areas in the planning area, so both in the city and the county side. If there were any lingering questions, Jesse Bank is here.
Yeah, I know that we had talked about GFCs being assessed in the PDA, has that issue been resolved?
Councilman, as you know, that conversation is raging throughout the city, and, and we're continuing to discuss it at our board. I think we plan to have worked towards a final comment from the NE PDA board at our next board meeting in July.
In July?
Yeah.
Is that going to be early July? I don't know if you know this, I'm taking some time off starting in July, so I'm curious.
Okay. July 14 is the date of our next board meeting, but, you know, being one of only three PDAs, we only have sort of a one-third say in kind of what happens with the PDAs, and obviously the county has a position as well.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no questions, I'm just really excited to see this get done, and just want to thank Jesse for, for all of his time and effort, and Amanda, and thank you for helping the shepherd, and Terry, and everybody, so it's, I think it's going to be a real positive to the PDA, and for those that don't know, I mean, there's some, some really awesome stuff starting to happen, and I am just so unbelievably optimistic, so it's exciting times.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
And I think that's the most excited I've seen Michael Cathcart ever, right there.
Number 13, A, B, C, D, and E are five multifamily property tax exemption conditional agreements, and Terry Stripes will brief these items.
Council President, Council, thank you. You have five projects in front of you for multifamily tax exemption. You have two in Council District Two and three in Council District One. These, excuse me, let me start over. A is four units on proposing to go with the 12-year Affordable Program. B is four units proposing to go with the 12-year Affordable Program. C is six units, looking at the eight-year program when they finalize. And D is six units, 12-year program. And then E is four units, eight-year program. Would you like, Council, would you like staff to be available at your legislative session for this?
No.
Thank you.
Numbers 14 and 15 will be addressed by Jen Saracides. First one involves the Neighborhood Community Development Program for 2022, and the second one is an award recommendation from the CHHS Board and CLC Board for Public Service and Housing Stability Grant Funding.
Thank you so much, good afternoon. I'm here today to ask for approval to utilize program year 2021 Annual Action Plan, project number Neighborhood Community Development, or NCDP, and PY 2022 Annual Action Project number NCDP to increase the allocations that we originally did in our 2020 plan for those neighborhood awards. The increased total is approximately $92,000, and that comes along with some increasing costs that happen between the awarding of the dollars and the, when we've actually gotten to the contracting of those. Okay, so the next one I have is the fifth year of the five-year grant awards, so I did present to council on this issue where we reviewed some of the metrics associated with these projects. We're requesting to enter into the fifth year of the five-year awards. We have a list of the full breakdown of the awards, the grants, contracts would stay the same, they would just have an amendment for the fifth year. Any questions?
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks.
Number 16 is an amendment extension to the agreement with Superior LLC, and Mike McNam will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council, this is a one-year extension on our Cry, excuse me, Cry Wolf Software, which is our company that administers our false alarm program. And false alarms, basically this program is designed to reduce the incidence of false alarms, so when we have false alarms, we have a lot of wasted police time running back and forth to these alarm calls, so this is an incentive through fines and through a permit process to incentivize people to reduce false alarms.
Yes, sir. Have, have any changes been made to the program in the last year or two?
Yeah, so we took a look at the ordinance this year because an issue came to my attention that we are charging people a fee to file an appeal, which I thought was atrocious, so we've gotten rid of that. In the city ordinance, it says we will charge a fee, but it doesn't say what that fee would be, so the fee right now is zero, and over this next year, we're going to be working towards coming up with some new language on this ordinance, so it's a little more fair to our taxpayers.
Yes, sir. Just one thing to add, I voted against this before and inclined to do so again, I haven't made up my mind entirely yet, but, and the reason being just there's some, some anecdotal stories that were shared from some individuals who had, had something happen, it was pretty evident that there was some sort of a situation, and because when the officer arrived, there wasn't a person there or an individual at their door trying to get in, they ended up getting charged, the, the false alarm, and, and there's a couple of different stories, not just a single, but a few different like that, and it just, so as we think about reworking this, I think, you know, if we can figure out how to just try to avoid that the best we can in future iterations of this, I think that would be really good, and I'd be supportive of it.
Yeah, and I totally agree with you. One thing we have done, another change is looking to make it so that more people have eyes on these decisions, especially ones that are not cut and dry, so we can have a more robust appeal process and where we have, it escalates up the chain of command, kind of like our chain of command reviews for our use of force, stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
I was going to ask, how many false alarms is business of persons allowed before they're actually fined or charged?
So I asked-
Back in the day.
I asked that very same question because I remember living in the city and having an alarm system, and I thought you got one free one. There's no freebies, but, let's see. There is one false alarm fee for each permit account removed if the false alarm occurred within 60 days of the initial installation, so kind of to work out the bugs, but if you don't get any false alarms for an entire year, then your permit for the next year is reduced by $10.
No freebies.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Major, should there be any freebies?
You know, I don't disagree with, disagree with the idea, I think it's something that we could discuss as we rework the ordinance over this next year. The reason I didn't want to bring this up now is because we're, if we don't approve this before June 30th, we're going to have a gap in service, so I didn't want to close up the program and then have to start it back up again, so the reason I wanted to do the one-year extension, give us a whole year to really look at this ordinance and rework it, and see if we think that is fair.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Number 17 and number 18 will be addressed by Clint Harris. Number 17 is a contract renewal with Frank Gurney, Inc., and number 18 is a contract amendment renewal with TransMap Corporation.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council. The Street Department is requesting the renewal of an on-call guard railway repair service with Frank Gurney at an amount not to exceed $100,000 a year. And then for item 18, the Street Department's requesting approval for an amended, amendment and renewal of a contract with TransMap to collect automated pavement assessment and sidewalk infill data for the arterial streets, and that's an increase we'd come before council requesting the TransMap contract, and, and now we're trying to assess the sidewalk pavement inventory. the TransMap contract, and, and now we're trying to assess the sidewalk pavement inventory.
Clint, can I ask you? On, on the guard rails, I've just, just me observing, seems to be a lot more that are run into and taken out. Has there been a real uptick in guard rail destruction?
Actually, the, it's been pretty steady for the, for the most part. Um, the purpose of the automated contract is it allows us to repair the guard rail quicker rather than taking it out to, to bit every time, so we can get the repairs to make the streets safer that way.
Okay, thank you.
What's the, not to exceed 100, if it's been steady, what has that number been?
I would have to get that number.
Okay.
And somewhere, be somewhere probably, you know, approaching, approaching that.
Okay.
But I'll get that to you. Right, thanks.
Thank you. Number 19 is a report of the mayor for pending claims, payments, and payroll with the numbers filled in. Number 20 is the placeholder for the council meeting minutes for June 5, 8, 15, and 22. Then on the legislative agenda, under resolutions, the first one, 2023-0043, will be handled under S1B. The second one, 2346, is the approval, the appointment of Jacoby Byrd and council president will address that one.
All right, I'll address it. Um, we went through our process and agreed that Jacoby Byrd should take over from Hannah Lee Allerson, be the director of the city council office, and under our new, um, ordinance requires a vote of at least four council members to approve that. So that's what that is.
Resolutions 2023-47 and 48 will be addressed by Eldon Brown, and they are setting hearings for street vacations and one alley vacation, I believe.
The first street vacation we're looking at here is the vacation of Conklin, south of Eighth Avenue. And basically on the map, as you can see, this right-of-way kind of dead ends is between Garfield and Arthur. So it's a dead-end piece of right-of-way that Spokane Housing Authority has an existing complex on that southeast corner of Garfield and Eighth, which is a 41-unit affordable housing units for, I think it's disabled and senior housing. What they would like to do is tear that complex down, rebuild it over here on the, including a part of this right-of-way, but the goal is to actually keep people living there while they're building a new one. So that's one of the reasons they want to vacate Conklin now. But, uh, and the new complex will actually go a little bit across this right-of-way. It'll expand from 41 units to 86 when they get all said and done. But by doing it this way, they would actually keep people living in that existing housing complex and move them into the new one before they tear down the existing one. But that's kind of the plan. They've requested no-cost vacation on this thing. It is an affordable housing complex. I think the actual cost would be, looks like it was, uh, $110,000 roughly is the cost of that vacation.
Yeah.
Have, I know we're setting the hearing, but has there been any feedback from anybody in that vicinity?
No.
Okay.
Not to date. I know they've been working, they own pretty much all the property on both sides except for a little bit on that east side of it, right adjacent to Eighth Avenue. That property owner's been totally cooperative with the, the process. He's for the vacation, and everybody's trying to work through it. But it would be, uh, they have requested, like I say, a no-cost vacation, which is, we've calculated to be about $110,000. They do have, Vista has requested an easement across the east 30 feet of it. Right now, they have some facilities in there, and, uh, we would actually request an easement just for the east 30 feet of the vacation, not for the west 30. And that's the only easement holder we're looking at. We have no city utilities in it. Be happy to answer any other questions about it.
Thank you, Eldon.
Yeah. The next one we've talked about previously is the alley between Fourth and Fifth, between Wyston and Bernard. This one, the applicant's requesting, he wants to build across the, basically the east half of this alley, and they're putting 210 workforce housing units, multifamily housing units on that site. Uh, this one, excuse me, this one here is the $110,000 one. The other one that I told you for the Eighth Avenue Conklin was 90.
Okay.
So I misspoke on that. This one is a, an at-cost vacation. We would be charging $110,000 on this one. Uh, we do have some issues with potential access for refuse. We've had a meeting about this. You have Wyston going one way to the south, and then you've got Bernard two-way over here, and that creates some challenges. When they're going to build this new workforce housing, they're going to build across that east half of this alley on there. So we've had a meeting, and we think everybody's working to do a solution to make that happen. We would not do the final reading of that vacation until that was worked out, but we think we've got a plan in place where they can actually handle that, the refuse for this one. But anyway, that's, uh, we did have easement requests from Comcast to Vista and CenturyLink or Lumen on there, and what they'll be doing is, since they're going to build across that east half of this alley on there, we'll reserve easements initially on there and potentially be able to release them for the west, uh, for the east half once they build the units across there and still keep them on the west half. They're pretty much going to leave the alley intact as it functions today for driveway access to some of these other businesses and church over there, but they'll just be building across that east half, and that's where primarily the impacts are. Anyway, be happy to answer any questions on that one.
So this vacation doesn't just affect their, um, their property. It's going to be affecting the folks around them?
Yeah, we have pretty much everybody supporting this vacation at this point in time.
All the surrounding property owners?
Yeah, we, we had a meeting, a virtual meeting not too long ago, and, uh, refuse was one of the big items to it. But we need to maintain access to the other ones coming off Wyston, and we get rid of the actual through nature of that alley by vacating basically where the building's going across that east half. But I think we've got the support pretty much of all the adjoining property owners. Thanks.
Resolution 2023 hyphen 49 is the approval of the appointment of Jessica Stratton as the director of management and budget, and Tanya Wallace will present this one. I don't see her here.
But she did.
We're all.
Okay, yeah.
We're all good.
Yeah, okay. Resolution 2023-50 is relating to the improvement of livability in the Logan neighborhood near the city's water department, and council member Cathcart is listed as the presenter.
Yeah, I would just make a motion to add, uh, resolution 2023 dash 0050 to tonight's legislative agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no. Any abstentions? All right, it's added.
And it was, it was briefed to Public Safety, but essentially this is requesting that the administration provide by September 1, uh, a plan for relocating the kind of heavy industrial activities that are taking place on that site adjacent to a, a neighborhood and next door to Yashahara Middle School. Um, and along with that would include, um, and, and I would just add, Marlene has been incredibly helpful in putting this together, but it would also include completing some missing sidewalk, uh, uh, there where, where the city owns property that really would be very helpful for the kids who are, uh, having to walk either well around where they should have to or actually in the roadway, so.
And on that, you said, Marlene has been helpful, but she's on board with the September 1 date as well, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Ordinance 36349 involves a vacation on Conklin Street, south of Hartson Avenue and Eldon Brown. We'll brief this item.
This vacation, we previously had the hearing on this one. It's the south three feet of the west side of Conklin Avenue, south of Hartson. We had the hearing on this back in January, and it was approved subject to conditions, and the basic condition we had was just the applicants paying for the right-of-way, which was only 2,600 and some dollars. We did have a, uh, just a fairly lengthy discussion about if any other property owners around there had any issues with it, and I'm not aware that anybody's had any issues with it. The, the applicants actually live in a house just to the southeast of that vacation, but they also own a property right on the west side, and that was the reason for the vacation, is they had part of the structure overhung in the right-of-way, about three feet. Between two and three feet is a 30-foot wide right-of-way, so we still have ample access for fire and all that. But there was no, no issues from anybody from the vacation, so we're just here for the final reading of that one. They've paid us the fee, so we're ready to go for the final reading. Any questions?
What would happen to that structure if they didn't get that three feet?
He just, it clouds the title on there when somebody tries to sell it or whatever. It's, creates an issue that we've actually had to work some things before when people have these in the right-of-way, but, uh, they just wanted to clear title to it, all right?
But they don't tear it down. That's what, that was your worry.
Yeah.
Thank you, Eldon. Ordinance 36389 will be handled under special consideration S1A.
And before you read the next one, I was just going to look for a motion on the ordinance that I had, 36396, to table it indefinitely.
No move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Just quickly, sorry.
Yeah.
This was the, the Parks ordinance, correct?
Parks and Dr. Blake.
Parks and Dr., right.
Now, it's been divided. There's a Blake and there's a Parks, so this is just kind of confusing things.
Okay.
Yeah. All those in favor of tabling indefinitely indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no. Any abstentions? Okay, that is tabled indefinitely. All right, continue.
So ordinance 36394 relating to parks, concerning parks, uh, rules and regulations. We have Mary Mira Moss listed, but I believe the council has been working on this one.
Yes, I'll go ahead and just do a brief. Um, council member Cathcart, council member Bingo, and myself have been working with Spokane Parks Department and the police to reestablish, um, a, uh, no trespassing in our city parks as a result of increased crime and property damage over the last, it's been increasing over the last couple of years. What this ordinance does is very simple. It, um, changes a, uh, makes it a misdemeanor now to be in the park after hours. Um, hopefully it will give our police officers another tool to be able to, um, answer those calls from individuals, from neighbors that are worried about folks in the park. They can go in, uh, because they're trespassing, and they can ask for identification, check for warrants, um, that kind of thing. My question is, we did have one change, and I sent out, um, this also requires that the data from arrests and from damage from parks and, uh, police, that that data comes to city council for, um, discussion yearly. Um, but we wanted to change that to say that it's annual reporting, but that the, they could, the city council could ask anytime for an update. So I retyped that in the ordinance and sent it out. Do I need to?
A motion to substitute.
Motion, that's my motion to substitute.
Yep.
Okay, so I do need to do that.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
You moved, you seconded? Any discussion on the motion to substitute?
And that's the only change.
All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no. Any abstentions? All right, it is substituted.
So ordinance 36394.
Great, but there's, there might be other.
Amendments, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, I have three amendments I want to consider individually. The first amendment, these were all circulated previously. The first one would make it unlawful for a group of five or more persons to congregate in the city park. Um, yeah.
Are you doing them one at a time?
One at a time.
Okay. That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, for this ordinance in general, I compiled some data about, that we haven't had about crimes in the parks that I just circulated to everyone. I literally typed it up while we were up here. Jacoby could pull it up. Um, this was thanks to Shawna Ernst over the weekend, I believe, and pulling some strings to find, to get data together on the parks because we really haven't had a discussion about trends of crimes in parks over the time, over, historically over the years. And I think what this data shows going back to 2017 is that there is really only one outlier from these, this data over time, and that was last year. Shootings was, was bad last year in the parks, and this is all city parks across the whole city. But there's been a lot of discussion about, um, how much has changed over time, and this is what we were able to pull quickly. Um, shootings from 2017 before, back when it was a misdemeanor, was 30, then it was 26, 29, 23, 25, 48, and 15. So I think that along with the other trends around vandalism, drugs, and violence, those are kind of the bigger issues, shows that the ordinance, or that the tool itself didn't change. We just had a spike last year. Um, this was data that we have not seen previously. Questions about it?
Yes. Um, so, in 2017, it was a gross misdemeanor.
And then it went to civil infraction.
So, um, in terms of the, the vandali- sorry, the vandalism, um, it doesn't give the amount of damage, so we don't actually know what the dollar figure is. That would be helpful. Under drugs, I don't know what drugs mean. Does it mean people doing drugs, selling drugs? More paraphernalia in the parks, that's a little bit.
These are all calls for service, so I don't have that information.
And then violent, I don't know what violent is. Does violent mean I hit you? Does violent mean, I, I don't know what violent means.
I believe.
I know what violent means. I don't know what they think violent means.
Yeah. I sent you the link to, I-
It's broken down in the.
Like robbery.
This is a summary, but it has every kind of, all the subs underneath.
Like robbery, sexual violence, all of that was under violence. It was the bigger violence.
Okay.
Um, again, I don't have all this information. I made a request for this data, uh, well over a week ago and just got it late last night. So I think that's just a point to make, that we don't really know all the information as we're making these decisions now, and we've only been looking at it with a very narrow scope of the last year, which it is a problem. I agree with everyone else up here on, on the dais that we have an issue, but I think when we look bigger picture, the trend is not there that we thought was there, uh, according to this data, but we don't have all the data. And so I, I think that's important. Um, we've heard a lot of concerns in the community around individuals and individuals being in parks and being arrested, and we've also heard concerns about how that would be enforced with a lot of discretion. Um, and, and I've also been frustrated that we haven't had legal analysis on this until recently, and that legal analysis didn't include, did not include any case law on it, uh, but was just an argument about it. And that's frustrating because we asked for that analysis during executive session two weeks ago and never received that information. So I think that, again, we're making decisions without knowing all the information. Um, my, my impression, though, if, if there's concerns about the constitutionality of groups of five, I think there's equal concerns of constitutionality around the 14th Amendment of equal protection of how this ordinance that we are about to vote on would be enforced. Um, that someone could claim that it's not being enforced evenly if you're not enforcing it for the person walking their dog or walking through the park alone, but you're enforcing it on somebody else who might look differently. They could claim that there was another protected feature of that, such as race, gender, other features. Um, that was the same concern that I've been told was a concern for the groups of five, is that a group of five could call that a concern if they looked different. So I, I don't think that's, uh, groups is a protected class the same way as race, gender, and others are a protected class. So I don't see the, the concern as much about this, uh, groups of five amendment. And this would give those protections to people who are concerned about getting arrested for crossing the park late at night and walking across the park.
Can I, I just want to correct something. So I just got, it's all right, just got a text from Mary Mira Moss saying that the analysis I gave Zach yesterday was filled with case law. So, just, I'm just reporting.
Okay.
Don't kill the messenger.
Jessica Stratton.
So Jacoby, I think you have, and I apologize, I didn't think to pull this up. Here are, just for everybody's knowledge, some, um, statistics if you want to look at, um, the damages for parks in a six-month timeframe, the property- damages for parks in a six-month timeframe, the property damage is at $163,936, and that's within the last six months. And if you look, it'll take you through Mission Park, $54,000 damage, Old Witter Bath House, $14,000, Keigho Park, $26,000, Benbir, $8,000. You can go down the list, and that damage included graffiti, playground damage, fences, damaging fences, stolen club cars, electrical damage, and gutted restrooms. Incidents that were logged from one, let's see, January 1, 2021, to 3/31, 2023, so that's, what, two, two years? 79 classified as violent, assault, rape, shooting, stabbing, et cetera, include shootings in 22 different city parks. There have been parks reported with the most shootings recently. Dwight Merkel had three, Mission Park had three, Audubon had two, Dutch Jake had two, Comstock two, and Cliff Park two. And the three top parks in northwest Spokane are Franklin, Shadle, and Dwight Merkel that had the highest calls for service in the last six months. And this past weekend, there was another call on Franklin Park regarding a large fight in the parking lot, and the neighbors heard gunshots, so they called the police. So, I apologize, I didn't present that information, but this was the data that started the conversations between a few of us council members, parks, and the police. So that'll kind of give you a more current, as we sit, numbers.
I will just say, then, that makes me even more concerned that we have people out of police giving us conflicting information that's not consistent. If Shawna Ernst is giving councilmembers a tone, one thing, and then Councilmember Strad is giving something else.
But I don't think he had anything for the last six months.
This is included. It's up until 2023.
Yeah. So we just have to break it down, see if it matches.
We have to break it down and get some consensus on how it's being reported and those calls coming in. So, again, data is data. It could be specific, it could be biased, how it's looked at, how narrow it is, how wide the scope is, but until I have a little bit more alignment, from one council member to the next, I think that should be a concern of ours as we make these types of decisions.
Yeah, I would add, I don't think there's a dispute. I don't dispute the last six months and issues like that. I'm just looking for a bigger scope.
Right.
Right? We're looking at saying that this tool has not been effective since it was changed, and I think when we look at the bigger picture, we don't see that tool changing was not correlated to a change in the spike in crime and vandalism and shootings, is what that bigger-picture data is showing. And so I feel an urgent need, right, to address something. There's a, there's a need in our parks to do something. I don't know if it needs to be as strong as it's being talked about, and so that's why I'm proposing to scale it back a little with groups. I have a couple other amendments, too, around, one that would sunset it and the other one that would change the hours. So I'm supporting still doing something, but doing it in a way that I think addresses a lot of the community concerns, because our community is divided on this issue. There are a lot of people that are fearful, and that these changes were made to get people out of criminal injustice-involved history in their lives, and that could change a projection of their lives if they get, they're young, they get involved in the criminal justice system, they then have a warrant, they have the court date, they have to miss work, that could create a cycle that is more costly in the end for our, our community.
Community's also confused about what this is, and they think that council makes the rules for parks, including parks' hours. We do not. That's a concern to me, because they're, the emails I'm getting are form letters. They're emails, they're not generated by people who are actually reading what we're doing. They're confused about what council has purview over, and that concerns me. In addition, Councilmember Cathcart, you made a suggestion. Could you repeat it, please?
The, in the email?
Yes.
Well, it was just, I don't think we should sunset, Mary Merematsu has made some, a pretty good reason why that doesn't make sense, just from a legal point of view. So my suggestion was some, and I don't have the exact language, but essentially suggesting that it should go back to the Parks Board in a year, so that they could just provide recommendations on improving, changing, could be removing the provision, if that was their, their perspective, but that the Parks Board should, should have that annual review and not necessarily us.
They would be the ones to change the hours, that we'd have to go through to change the hours. So on this amendment, though, this is to.
This is the groups of five.
Yeah, and so I guess my final comment would, I think that in lieu of the discussions we've had with the group and neighborhoods, and I know you and I have gotten different feedback from neighborhoods, I would just say that I think anyone in a park who is doing anything illegal should be held responsible, whether it's one or two people, or whether it's five or six, and providing that tool for a police officer to go in and to question more than they can right now, because it would be a misdemeanor. We may be able to stop some of those shootings and some of those violent incidents before they even start, now that, if we could pass this and give them that tool to do that. So I would vote against the, your amendment.
I wanted to suggest a friendly language amendment to your amendment, because it's missing a word. It says, "It shall be unlawful for a group of five or more persons to congregate in a city park." I think it was meant to, "in a closed city park." So, I don't know if.
Yeah, I accept that.
You're second.
I'll second the friendly amendment.
What's enclosed? Closed. Oh, closed. I thought you said enclosed. Okay.
The park is already closed.
Yeah.
Not during the day.
Okay.
Yeah, so just to speak again to the groups one, there are concerns. I hear you, councilmember Kinnear, about how people are misunderstanding the hours issue, and that it is illegal already to be in the parks after hours, but what we are talking about is changing that consequence, and I think that part is not misunderstood. People definitely understand the difference between getting a ticket versus getting arrested for that same consequence. And so the concerns are still the same, if not more, because they're worried about getting arrested. But yes, I hear you about the hours.
I'll just comment, because I supported the amendment to the groups when, when the police were here, and what we've heard from parks is not one or two people, it's a group of people. So we're not just, so that's a whole different narrative than just somebody walking through. So if it's a group of people that is causing this illegal activity, then why are we looking at the group of people? If they have been identified and the police know that they are in the area, and I also had a conversation with a gang task force member that, yes, there are gangs that have moved into West Central, but we haven't heard from, not that they're all gangs, but if there's an element of that, why haven't we heard that from our police department, what's going on? If there is this type of activity that's bubbling up? So it's like, this has been going on, and now we get here. So it's been brewing, and then it breaks when we could have addressed it. I feel a little bit more upstream, and it just seems such a heavy-handed approach to an issue that's needed, but does it have to be this heavy-handed going forward?
Kansas member Cathcart.
Yeah, just, on that note, I would, I will definitely try to schedule some time for the Safe Streets Task Force to come to public safety and talk, because I can tell you, as far back as at least December 21, I had met with them, and they shared just how serious the gang situation is becoming in this community, and why we are seeing such an uptick of shootings in our parks, shootings across the city, drive-by shootings, all of it, and much of it is gang-related, especially under 18 gang-related. So happy to have them come and talk about that, because absolutely, that, that should be first and foremost on our minds in the context of all the public safety discussions we're having.
And I'll just weigh in briefly. I think the problem that Captain Hindren described were groups. That's what he said. The big problems were competing groups, bumping up against each other and leading to violence. And anytime, my own view on whether you make something a crime or not, is you want to only make things crimes that really need to be crimes. And so an individual walking their dog, or walking across Manitow Park from the bus stop at 10:30 at night to their home on the other side, which is way faster and better lighted to do that, I don't think we should make that a crime. So I think we should focus on it. I agree with what everybody has said, that we have problems, we need more police in our parks after hours for groups. So I think this is, it narrows it, and I saw an article that showed examples all across the nation where people enhanced the penalty based on how many people were there. So the argument that you can't, you have to treat people the same for one person as a group, if you can justify why, it takes more resources, it's scarier for the police, it's more likely to get into problems, you can make the punishment higher for groups, according to courts in states all across the nation. Are there arguments that can be made? Yep, there are, there are always arguments. So I support this. All right. Ready to vote on the amendment that would make it unlawful for five or more persons to congregate in a city park, closed city park? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no?
No.
And abstentions? All right, amendment does not pass.
And my second amendment is to make it, all city parks shall be closed from 11:00 PM, not closed, sorry, the enforcement of, of a misdemeanor, shall be from 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM, except for Riverfront Park, from 12:00 AM to 4:00 AM. So this is not changing the park hours, the park hours are already the same. This is changing what city council is responsible for, which is the punishment of it being a misdemeanor. And so, again, that's the time that we heard from Captain Hindren that was of most concern. This would align it to be that way, so that if you're not there caught up at 10 o'clock at night, right afterwards, that you're, you don't get arrested for it, but rather aligns to the needs and concerns of the community. And I understand this does not match the hours of the park board sets, and could make things a little complicated, where you can get a civil infraction one hour and a misdemeanor the next. I support going and asking the parks to updating it with summer park hours and stuff like that. I think it's easier for us to set that precedent now and go talk to the Parks Board later, rather than going and asking them and then updating our code, since we're already doing it.
Kansas member Cathcart.
Yeah, I mean, I guess there's no second yet, but I'll just comment.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my thought is, this is effectively changing the hours of the park, I mean, for all intents and purposes, because it, it does essentially say, hey, we're not going to do anything to enforce until these, these specific hours. But it does change the, the hours of the park. I would rather, because I am open to changing hours of the park, I would rather just pass a resolution that says, hey, park board, we'd like you to change the hours to this, and let's just do it. I mean, it just, it doesn't have to be complicated. I do think SPD has recommended that it should be 5:00 AM, not 4:00, so I would definitely prefer 5:00. But I think a later evening time, particularly for, for a park, does make a lot of sense. So I'd be open to the conversation on that, but I think we should just pass a resolution to the park board, asking them to change the hours.
I would be more than happy to amend this to 5:00 instead of 4:00.
And Riverfront Park is open till midnight.
Yes.
It's different.
And this would follow that.
Garrett, Garrett Jones has been very open in saying, let's get this moving forward, and then go to the park board, like you're recommending to say, see how it works, and then talk to the park board and get their permission to mess with hours.
Kansas member Kinnear.
And I support that. The reality is, this is not going to take effect until probably August. By the time, you know, if it passes, it's, it's not. So we have a month to do a resolution and petition the park board to have summer hours, winter hours, and make sure that their signage is in multiple languages.
Yes, yes. And my, and my suggestion has been to put like a QR code at least, if you can't fit everything on there.
You can't, just a QR code. Exactly.
Yeah, to respond on the timing-wise, I would say if the park board were to change their hours, it takes us another month to be able to update our code, because that has to go back to committee, has to go to first hearing and second hearing, and we're not going to be here for the first two weeks of August anyway. So we're really looking at not being able to update it this summer. So, and to the councilmember Cathcart's concern about it not being enforceable, they are still able to enforce with a civil infraction, so it's not that there is no rules, there's no closure times. It is not, it's just changing what type of consequence you get.
But as we know, the civil infraction isn't really enforceable.
Well, I would just add that we, we haven't been using that tool.
He's not moving. Garrett? If he, if he wants to come up, yeah. I will just.
Want to come up and add anything to this?
No, while he's coming, we have lots of park rules, and they're all enforced by infractions. So, I don't know that, but, he's talking to his lawyer first. On the advice of council.
Counsel president, while there's a lull, I need to open up the testimony sign-in form at 5:00, so I just wanted to note.
Oh, yeah.
That.
We're done.
Okay, here he comes.
Yeah, I don't think we're.
Is there one more to add?
It's the parking.
Here comes Garrett.
Or, let's do that real.
Consideration.
No, but I think there is a parking regulations ordinance that isn't on the agenda yet, so let's do that real, hang on for a second. Is there a motion to add ordinance C36405 to the first reading of ordinances tonight?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Kansas member Cathcart.
Yeah, I, I believe this should go through the plan commission, so I'm going to oppose this for now, but if it does fail, I will make a motion that it goes to the plan commission for review.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of adding it, again, just as a first reading, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no?
No.
Two noes. Any abstentions? All right. It's added for first reading tonight, it still creates other. And also, I think councilmember Cathcart, you were going to defer your.
Oh, thank you.
Special consideration.
Yes, I move to defer the special consideration to July 10.
Second. And that's A and B. Okay. All the, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right. Okay.
I do have one, one more amendment, I guess we're still getting there.
We'll, we'll come to that, but yeah, all right. Mr. Jones.
All right, well, thank you, council president and council. I was advised not to speak from legal, no, just kidding. I wanted to clarify a couple pieces, because when we're doing park rules, the park board via resolution only sends their recommendations to the council to adopt. So as a compromise, and you know, park rules, I mean, as far as the hours, I think there's, we've gone all spectrums. We used to have language in there about daylight savings time, and this date to this date, and then everybody's like, well, that's confusing, let's just go, let's keep it a straight time from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, the parks are open. So there could be a condition within one of the warehouses, if you wanted to amend, to say, this is what we recommend as a council, with the consideration or caveat that we get a letter of support or a resolution via the park board, which would meet the second week in July, that would still fall under that 30 days before the law comes into effect. So essentially, we'd do it a little bit backwards, but you'd still get to the same result if you wanted to tweak the park hours.
So just for clarity, so instead of the park board recommending and then us, I guess approving, it would be the opposite, and we would suggest it, and they would confirm?
And they would just confirm it through, via, because all they do anyways right now is via resolution for any park rule. They can't make the final call on it. City council has to as an SMC change, but we would just be, again, that was just my quick compromise there.
I'm confused, and I'll take advice from anyone in the room, but, so I've been told only the park board can change the rules, but you're telling me that it's city council that changes the rules.
It's only via resolution. It's an SMC change.
So we're, we are the ones that do.
I would ask, you know, because, Mr. Wright, to chime in here as well, but it is anytime that we've done anything park rules related, it is a via, a resolution to the city council to make that change.
From the park.
But they have to initiate.
They initiate it.
But there, is there something in the code or the charter that says that, or is that just the culture that has developed? Because it sounds like you're saying it's the city council that determines the final decision on park rules.
Correct. But I think that follows under the charter of the SMC, right?
Well, it's the charter, SMC underneath it.
Correct.
I don't.
Is there anything that says it has to be initiated by the Parks Board?
Not to the amendment's knowledge.
If I may.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr.
Policy advisor, not lawyer, but policy advisor, yes.
Section 48 of the charter outlines-
Into your mic, into your mic.
Section 48 of the charter outlines the powers of the park board, and it gives the park board sole jurisdiction over the parks. And what the park board does is it establishes rules for the parks, but the park board cannot criminalize conduct. And that's the rub here, only the council can criminalize conduct. So when I was on the park board, we were free as a board to establish rules, especially the hours of parks, but we could not make them a criminal offense, we could only make them a civil infraction. And so, only the council, of course, can amend the code. The park board can set the rules, but it cannot set the penalties that you probably are looking for.
But we do have a bunch of park rules that are civil infractions in our code that we pass, not the park board.
That you did, yes.
Okay.
Correct. My understanding, the park board as itself cannot change or amend the SMC, and that would be true.
Okay.
So that's why whether it's park hours or anything else within the parks' rules would have to have final approval by the city council.
What's happened is that the council, with the park board's blessing, if you will, has taken the rules and put them into the code and created the penalties.
Okay. So you could have a world where the park board passes their rules with no legal effect in terms of fines or criminal things, and the city council has their code, and there have been times, attempts to keep them the same, but they're, either are free to do both at any time, it sounds like.
That's my interpretation.
Yeah.
We have the language, if you want to read it, that one section. Zach, do you want to read that?
Oh, section 48. 48.
Right here. Yeah, do you want to read it?
It's a long section. This one?
Just that one little blurb.
Rules and regulations. Yes.
So it says, the park board shall have power to make rules and regulations for the use of parks and provide for the enforcement of such rules and regulations, to prohibit and determine the placing manner of making excavations, the placing of maintaining wires and pipes and others. So I don't know if that got us to-
But it seems like the council, if it comes to fining somebody or incarcerating someone, it's council makes that decision.
So my, I guess my only suggestion, on the compromise piece, if it was truly, you wanted to penalize between 11:00 to 4:00 theoretically, whatever that was-
Well, it changed to 5:00.
You could put in there, then you would like, as an endorsement or a consideration of the park board, then to potentially align the park hours to follow that, so we don't have the discrepancy there.
So, just trying to understand, so if, so under your, so with your understanding, amending it in the way that's being proposed by council members opposed, is that permissible? Or does it need to be amended in a different way? Because you mentioned the whereas earlier, and so I'm just curious, is this the way it's supposed to be amended for the park, for the park board to be able to do their-
Legally, I wouldn't be able to speak in it. The only, for the whereas that I think would, that I was suggesting would be a whereas, asking the park board to reconsider the park hours to align when the misdemeanor is being enforced.
So are you suggesting whereas in addition to his language, or instead of?
In addition.
Okay.
In addition to.
Right, so it's saying, yeah, you're setting it this way, but make the request to the park board to align it, so the park board would then consider making their rules the same.
Counselor member Bingel.
Yeah, I'll say this is an interesting development, because that is not what we had been told. But I actually, being the park board liaison, I would support something that changed the hours from 11:00 to 5:00 to more aligned with, again, what the police have told us are the problem hours. I remember being, you know, a young kid in the summertime, and, you know, the sun is still up at 10:30 or whatever, you know, and you're out there playing in the parks. I have no problem with that. What I wouldn't want to do is step on the park board's toes, and so if that's something that we were interested in, I would be supportive of the 11:00 to 5:00 if the park board approved. Yeah.
So, could the, here's thinking what I'm thinking.
Amend it to 5:00?
No, well, yes.
Or add a whereas?
Yeah, 11:00 to 5:00.
Add the piece that Garrett just talked about.
Yeah, and we can bring it up for at 6:00.
Yeah, can we just defer this to 6:00?
Sure.
Okay.
So we'll clean that up.
That one amendment, about the hours.
So we'll-
Yeah.
That was two or three.
Well, so, so you're going to withdraw this amendment for now?
And bring it back at 6:00.
Yeah. The substitute version.
All right, so withdraw. Amendment three is that this would have a sunset clause, so it would say that this section expires on June 26, 2024, unless city council, upon receiving sufficient data justifying its extension, acts an ordinance extending it.
Second.
Can I just speak to it real quick?
Yeah.
So this one is one that I think is quite important. I understand it's also controversial, as they all are. I think that sunsets do provide value, that it shows that things are being used and that they can come back, and if it's going well, we'll be able to renew it easily and quickly. If it's not going well, we have the authority and the power to always change laws, but sometimes taking things away is difficult. When it naturally sunsets, it's a lot easier, and that is why sunsets are common across the board, more at the state legislature than here at city council, but they're not unheard of. And this one, I would even be interested and willing to add another amendment that would be ready at 6:00 if this were to be adopted, that would make this an emergency ordinance instead of a regular ordinance. If this were adopted, I would give my support to the overall ordinance, and I think that that could pass as an emergency ordinance in that way.
And can you share what Captain Hendren, what his comments were to that question?
Yep, so we chatted with Captain Hendren a little while ago, and Kim Wado's following the advice of city legal, which basically said that you can always repeal a law, and that it makes it easier and cleaner to repeal a law than have it sunset. I think there's different concerns, more politically than legally, and that's why sunsets are more attractive to people. I also think that as much as Blake was a controversy, if there was no sunset on Blake and the old version existed, we would still be operating under that version now, but because it had a sunset, it required action and required changes that I think improved the bill. But if it had not sunsetted, the legislature would have adjourned and there would have been no changes. So I think those are two different considerations, us as a legislative body. I think it puts it on us to reconsider it next year, and it also puts it on enforcement to show that it's working well and that they take advantage of this tool. Otherwise, the next council in next year might not want to continue it.
Counselor member Shet.
So I would just say that council has the authority to change the law if we determine at any time that the law is unnecessary, ineffective, or improperly enforced. And one of the reasons that we felt it important to really discuss this piece is because of that data. So we're requesting that the Parks Department, Police Department provide data on the parks and issues damage, violent crimes in the parks. So that gives the council, the next council, a future, a tool to look at, to really see, is this working? Are we doing what we're, what we wanted to do? And so I guess I just would like to keep that power in the council, they have the authority to change it anytime, if they determine that it's not effective and/or properly enforced. I think it keeps it clean, it keeps it factual and, yeah, so that's where I'd leave it.
And I'm going to speak in support of the amendment. I feel pretty strongly about this one, I think it's really important. This, essentially, council member Stratton and I had a compromise a few weeks ago of a six-month sunset in order to kind of bridge the gap between us. We're both super concerned, but we had different ideas about what likely was to happen. And I felt like, we said, all right, this is a law I don't really think is going to be effective, but let's let the data show it. And as long as there's a sunset, then I know, then the data will be gathered, that it will be enforced, and it will go away unless there is a political will to move forward. It's kind of the question of where we think the political will will be, and just the debate on this in the last few weeks has been a challenging debate and a bit painful, even amongst people who work well and really admire each other. And in the community, we've seen a lot of division on this, and I think the sunset would make, create a situation where we don't have to experience that. Because if the data comes in, that those crimes really go down based on this, and we can document what the police are able to do and who they're stopping, who are engaged in things, then I don't think there'll be so much of a community. Right now, it's kind of a faith-based proposition, regardless of what side you're on. And I agree with council member Stratton, that the council can decide anything at any time, and that argument goes both ways on this one. And when I asked for legal, because we had some sense from legal that they thought that having a one-year sunset would make it weaker, but we never really got any legal analysis of that. So I never saw any cases or statutes or constitutional pieces that said that. I think now we've gone, and council members opposed, instead of a six-month, it's a year, so we'd have a full year to do it, especially if it went to an emergency and went into effect right away. So I just think, rather than, as painful as it is, rather than kicking it off to a future council and saying, okay, you decide whether you should repeal this or not, which politically is always going to be challenging, regardless of the facts on the ground, I think we do what the legislature did in Blake, which is said, okay, we're going to try this out, but if it doesn't work, it goes away, so you'll actually have to do something. And we have a much better law now because of that Blake sunset. I think if the sunset hadn't been there, the legislature would not have called a special session, they just would have said, oh, we couldn't get it done. So I'm strongly supporting this.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
I just want to bring up that on June 6, Mary Marimatsu did send us all an email, and part of that she did look at when we talked about it being a pilot program. And one of the big issues was that, let's see, if you decide in six or 12 months that you don't like this approach and change it back to an infraction, you will be placing the city and those officers in a very precarious position. Let's see what else. In my opinion, that would not be fair to minimum.
I'm just cautioning you just slightly, I didn't know if that's an attorney-client privilege email or not, so I-
Oh, yes, it is. I apologize. Yeah, but she did, I just want to say, she did return her opinion on the question that we asked her.
And my concern was, I didn't see any case law or statutes, so I understood her opinion, but.
Okay. Counselor members opposed.
Yeah, the other reason I think this is important too, is that we know as a council that we've been very frustrated multiple times just this year about not receiving updates and data and reports from the administration, whether that's quarterly CMAS reports, budget updates that we've legislated. We've seen this repeatedly, and so there's no assurance in the future that we will even get the data. It's based on trust, and I hope to get it, but there's been even times now when we're talking about it, that's been challenging to get data too. So that's not necessarily an individual's malicious intent, it's just sometimes not the top priority issue. And so this would make it a priority issue to make sure that we have the data, that we have the conversation, to continue the ordinance if it's being effective. If it's not being effective, then it wouldn't be a priority, and it would go to the wayside. I think that's an important consideration too.
Counselor member Bingel.
I guess I just have a question on how we're going to be measuring the success in a year. Reason being is that, you know, we saw a huge spike in shootings last year, right? Forty-eight last year as opposed to, you know, mid-20s and maybe 30 there. If it goes down to 36 from 48, is that a big success or not? Because, I mean, historically, if we're looking at those years, 36 is still high, but it's lower than 48. And so I don't know what data we're going to be using to measure its success on that when we're talking the actual metrics. Because also, when we're talking about the data of when it was a misdemeanor, gross misdemeanor, and before, we actually only have one year of that data, right? We only had 2017 that was presented here today, we don't have a lot more than that. And so, you know, the, that number could have been a, you know, a really high year there, and we could have, for years before that, been in the teens or the high single digits, we don't know from that data that's been presented, so.
And we asked for the data, just so you know.
I'm sure, I'm sure, but, yeah.
I think it's up to us to ask the right questions on what kind of data we want and be very specific, because if you just ask for data, you're just going to get general stuff. If you ask for things that are very specific and press it, make sure you get it, and ask those difficult questions, make it uncomfortable for people not to answer you, you're going to get the right data.
Yep. The reason why it only goes back to 2017 is that's when the database shifted. But I did ask for the five years prior and the five years after, and I agree with you, it's frustrating not having it. I had another point. Oh, the point I think is important too, about this being an emergency ordinance, we talked about this last time, but it would go into effect today immediately, and would be a tool that officers could use all summer. Instead, if it doesn't go into effect today, it has to go into effect on August 1, and that is a substantial part of the area time period of concern. And so Captain Hendren also said, yeah, I'd love to have this tool today, that'd be great, but I'm not going to go against legal advice on that. So that's a consideration for us as a legislative body, I think, is do we want to give our officers that tool now? And this is a part of compromise too, as a legislative body. I think we seek to strive for a lot of compromise, and while I wanted to see a lot of other changes, I think this is the one that, if this were to change, I would be willing to change my vote on this and make that tool effective now all summer long. There was a shooting last weekend in Franklin Park, this would give them that tool starting immediately.
Counselor member Bingel.
Having been on the wrong end of a number of 5-2 votes, my opinion on compromise might be a little different in this body, but, but what I would say is that we can still make this an emergency ordinance today and vote for the one that we have if we had five votes. And so the option for an emergency does not depend on us necessarily adding something that we don't think makes it better. We also have the option of just adopting the one that has been proposed, that has gone through a good process and could be adopted. So it's not as if we have to do this, otherwise the cops don't get the tool that they need. We could also give them the tool that they need today with five votes, without adding anything else.
Counselor member Cathcart.
Yeah, I would just say, I mean, I think there's, in the question of how do we know if it's being successful or not, I mean, there's two pieces to this. Really, the reason it's before us right now is because the parks board said six months ago, hey, you should look at this, or actually longer than six months, but, hey, you should look at this and consider passing this. But the other piece is that the SPD has requested this change as well to help maintain the safety of our neighborhoods, our, most of our parks sit in our neighborhoods. And so I think there's two different pieces as to what makes this successful, and I think the parks board has to have a voice in at least part of it. And so the idea to me of sunsetting this without the parks board playing any role is wrong. I think they need to have some role in that, and so that's why I'm not going to support this amendment. If it was sending it to the parks board for their review, advice, changes, modifications, repeal, whatever, that's fine to take that input there and have that be the start of the process, but I think just to come back to us and repeal without the parks board playing that role is missing a key element, because that's why we're here right now, is it was on their request.
And that, again, that could be part of whereas language that we talked before, of asking them to give us their thoughts on that. Other, council members opposed.
Yeah, for metrics, too, I think decreasing crime and showing that it hasn't been disproportionately impacting people, and even better yet, if they didn't actually even arrest people, that would be a sign of success. They said that they, they're hoping that this, passing this would cause them to arrest people. If that happens, I think that shows that it's being effective. So that goes to, that, I just want to put it out to this legislative body again, that, you know, we have an opportunity to compromise and make that impact real right now. I understand that we could change that right now, but compromise is about not everybody getting exactly what they wanted, and this is only one thing that I think is, it's an important change, and I know that it's not an easy ask the other direction either, but I think that's about building trust, and I think that would help bring the whole community together, because right now it is dividing our city and our community.
All right. Any other comments? Counselor member Bingel.
I would just say that the sunset, the concerns I hear from the sunset is, in essence, we're worried the cops are going to target people who aren't white, is sort of the argument that I'm hearing right now. that I'm hearing right now. And what I don't want to be making any public statements about, which is what the argument for the sunset has been, is that we have concerns that that is what our police are doing. I'm worried that adding that portion in there says that to that group of individuals.
Well, let me just, because I negotiated the sunset with Councilmember Stratton.
Yeah.
That my concern of this always has been that you are making regular people who aren't causing any harm or damage into criminals, whether or not they're handcuffed and taken away. You are making them into criminals, simply walking through a park, walking their dog, being on a morning run early, and they just shouldn't. Even if the police don't handcuff them disproportionately to race, you are making people into criminals. And people who are rule followers, which probably mostly people here and a lot of people, they just, it's like, ooh, that's just, it's a challenge. So that has always been my thing, is it's too broad of a tool, the way it's defined. So I have been interested in making it narrower. If I was doing it, I would write something very different, but even given that, I'm saying, let's limit the time and then see if it works. But it is not saying that, oh, the police will do a bad job of it. My actual fear on this is that not much will happen, that they will, because what I heard from Captain Hindren, who is very committed, a good public servant, is that he thinks that simply by us passing this, that people will stop going into parks. I do after-hours. I just don't think that's going to happen. And he says he does not have enough people, at least in his sector, to do it. He just doesn't. And so other than an initial, using overtime funds that are in scarce supply to do a little bit of emphasis at the beginning, it doesn't sound like they're really going to be in the parks and they're going to be doing it. And I just think people who are vandalizing will go in there and vandalize. So that is my thing. So I feel like we're making a lot of people into criminals, which is different than civil, you know, speeding or overstaying your parking meter. That's not, you know, that's against the rule, but you're not a criminal. We're making all those people in that, and we're not getting anywhere for it. So that is why I was. It's not an indictment of the police. I think there's always chances of implicit bias, which means not intentional bias that creeps in whenever you're enforcing laws, and we all have it. So yeah, is that a risk? But that is not my main thing. It's making so many people criminals and not getting much out of it. So I'll step off my soapbox. All right, any other debate before a vote on this amendment?
I would just say my last comment would be, with the amount of crime and damage going on in the parks right now, for a police officer to have that precious time to respond to a call asking them to check out a park, they're probably going to, well, no, I know they're going to be easier on that person walking their dog at 5:00 in the morning and say, you know, legally, you can't be in here, it's trespassing. But they're not going to go for those. They're going to go for the people that are doing all this damage and are victimizing people and making people afraid to, families to be in the parks. I mean...
Well, they shouldn't be there after-hours.
Well, but you know what I'm saying. If I lived across the street from Franklin Park right now, I would put my house up for sale, period. And I don't blame that neighborhood for being upset.
And I hear Councilmember Stratton, the challenge is they've never caught the people who've done the damage. I mean, they're gone by the time they get there.
Not necessarily.
Well, for the most part, they're not just vandalizing and graffitiing, waiting around for the police to show up. Or if they're doing criminal or hurting other people, they just don't show up and stay. And again, I heard that the amount of officers that cover that night shift, on a good night there's 15, and if it's not a good night, it could be less than that. So again, yes, they need a tool. They have some tools. Enforcement, overtime, capacity, education, and all this dialogue shows that there is still much confusion around this park ordinance of how we go forward. I like the compromise, and it is, we all get what we want, but we could work together and move it forward, or we could feel like we're just sitting here spinning our wheels, regurgitating the same conversation and the same concerns over and over and over again. So we just have to vote our conscience and let it go from there. So I'll call for the question.
My closing argument?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
Just call for the question.
Oh, yeah, all right. The last comment, as I just, again, back to this sunset, I urge this council to, one, I'm committed to making an emergency ordinance after that. We can make an impact starting today and consider this as a compromise in our community that I think that would show our community that we are working on this together, that we strive for that, and that it's not just a back and forth. So I ask for a compromise.
All right. All those in favor of the amendment with a sunset of June 26, 2024 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no.
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 All right, abstentions. All right, the amendment was not passed, and we're pretty close to the rest of our agenda. Oh, but we have to brief the next one.
Next one is ordinance 36399 relating to the regulation of illegal activities in public spaces. I think this one has also been before the council for quite a bit, with Councilmember Kinnear listed.
Oh.
It's just repealing the Blake decision.
Yeah, this repeals the Blake decision.
That's it.
But it doesn't just repeal it, it lines it up with state.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, and I will talk about it more tonight, but...
Thank you.
Okay.
Jeff did send around a whereas, if we want to just adopt that now.
I didn't.
For the park hours.
Can we do that later?
Let's do it later.
We all have time to look at it, yeah.
Please.
People are hangry, so...
I saw.
All right.
All right, first reading ordinances. Ordinance 36391 and 36392, has already been a motion to substitute?
No. No, there's a request.
For a...
I think we should just...
Substitute.
I think there's still more coming, so...
From whom?
Spencer and Chris has more on the short-term rentals.
I have one that'll be coming.
Yeah, I think let's just wait on the substituting.
So this regards to short-term rentals and short-term platforms, and Amanda Beck is listed as a presenter. Is there further presentation on this?
I don't think we need any more.
Okay. All right. Ordinance 36400 relating to parking municipal code amendments, and Luis Garcia will present on this one.
And I have a motion to amend related to this.
Thank you, Councilmembers of the council. This ordinance was briefed at a committee talking about really the enforcement of electric vehicle charging stations, as well as a kind of a housekeeping element to bring back the decal for golf cart, the fee for golf cart decals. So that was initially the initial ordinance. I understand there's an amendment to it.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so this was circulated just before the deadline earlier today. Apologies on the late notice. Chris had helped put this together, and so basically this just, it is timely since we have this ordinance open to insert this. And so a few months back, I got a call from a friend who had been in municipal court and mentioned that the judges were very freely sharing the fact that no longer is it a defense to point out that maybe you were one digit off on your license plate or the zone number, and it had been before. And apparently what had happened when we had made a big code change, that got taken out and not put back in. And so this is trying to just insert some language that says, you know, if you did pay, but there was an error, and it's clear that there was an error, that that would be a valid defense in defending why you shouldn't get a parking ticket. So that's essentially what this is.
Is there a motion to substitute?
Yes, so moved.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of substituting indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right, that's substituted.
Thank you, Luis. Ordinance number 36401 relates to the sales and use tax for housing and housing related to supportive services and Nicolette...
Ockletree. Nicolette Ockletree. It's hard. Ockle, like debacle, that's the way to remember it. So I did brief this, and I know everybody's a little hangry. Before, I was also going to send out a survey so that I could get a little bit more in-depth feedback from all of you. Were there any specific questions, or did you want me to go back and remind you on anything? Or for the sake of time, you want to move on?
I think we can just have some private conversations if we need to.
Yeah, this is first reading, but essentially it formalizes council policy direction for the use of 1590 funds.
Yep. Okay.
Thanks, Nicolette.
Ordinance number 36402 relating to city-owned property and community concerns, and Alex Gibalesco will brief this one.
We have difficult last names, I think. Good afternoon, council. So yes, I'm briefing the ordinance relating to establishing a process to consider enacting upon communities' concerns regarding city-owned properties. This was briefed at the May Urban Experience Committee and then at the June Human Rights Commission. We made two changes after our Urban Experience Committee, once you can find in the recommendation to the Spokane City Council section. And that one reads, the SHRC recommendation may include, but it's not limited to renaming the property, recontextualizing, replacing, or removing any content on the property or removal of relocation of any content. And then we also added a section around naming policies, which just ask to revisit the city's policies and procedures that make sure it aligns with this chapter. Any questions?
Okay, Alex, you have the next one as well. Ordinance 36403 regarding establishing the motto of the city of Spokane.
Yeah, so this is establishing the city motto to, in Spokane, we all belong, and it'll be adopting a new section to the code. We checked with the administration to see if there was an established motto. We were not able to find something that established the motto or an executive order or anywhere in the code that we could find that. We presented this at the Urban Experience in June, and then also at the Equity Subcommittee and the Human Rights Commission in March. But then this is also a reminder, this Thursday, we're hosting a city council training with John Powell from the Othering and Belonging Institute. So I think we can learn a little bit more of the concepts around the country, around belonging and creating a community of belonging.
Okay, thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Finally, ordinance 36404, adopting policy standards for broadband infrastructure expansion, and Eric Finch will brief this item.
All right, good afternoon, council. Appreciate the time for this. Again, as briefed earlier this afternoon, this is the ordinance that kind of helps set the policy goals and kind of the overarching goals of where we're trying to go with the broadband, and I look forward to your support in this so we can get to work.
And we...
Thank you.
We briefed this parking minimums already today, right? No needs anymore?
Yes.
All right, and we deferred special consideration. So is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right. You have 45 whole minutes to yourself. We're adjourned.
We don't have an executive session.
Mother of God.